It is Tuesday, April 14. This is a special school committee meeting for the Greenfield Public Schools. It is 6:01 and I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20. And let's have Secretary Johnson, please can you do a roll call?
Absolutely. Member Karen?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Here.
Member Hollins?
Here.
Hi, Secretary Johnson, I'm here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Hey, Rita Gardner? We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. And I did neglect to ask, this meeting is being recorded by GCTV. Are there any other folks on the line who are also recording? Okay, hearing none. We'll move right into our first agenda item, which is the approval of the draft minutes from our last meeting, April 7, 2020. I'll take a motion to approve.
Chair Poiety, this is Susan Farber calling. I'm attending now by phone, but I'm still waiting to join the video meeting. And I'm wondering whether someone will let me in.
Oh, okay. So, let you in. Are you using your K-12 account?
There I go again. Thank you. Okay, I'll keep calling. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Thanks for checking. A motion to approve the draft minutes from April 7?
Should we pause and wait for the reporting secretary? Or I can handle notes until she gets in?
You know, Glenn, I'm so glad you keep me on my toes.
I can hear. I'm okay.
Oh, she's good. Okay. Thank you both. I'll try again for a motion.
I move we accept the minutes.
I second. That's Member Wall and Secretary Johnson.
Okay, any discussion?
I have some comments.
What is that?
That is horrible feedback from somewhere. So, a reminder that if folks are listening in to the meeting, it's really important to have your device or your phone on mute to help the call quality for everyone else. I think it was Member Hollins who said you had a comment?
Yes, I went through the minutes. I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
On the... On Section A, the Remote Learning Plan, the fourth bullet, it says that Liz Lefond clarified. I think what I would like to say is that the chair-related advice from Liz Lefond, we didn't have any message from her directly, as we may. So, I thought that was important. And I also disagreed, although I made the motion. But I said that I didn't agree that we had no role, particularly in approving a new program, particularly when there's a budget expense. And that wasn't in the minutes. And then, under the Pupil Personnel Services, let me see, where that's Section D, the minutes say that the school system cannot undertake a search during the pandemic. What I recall from my vote, from my minutes, was that we were, the superintendent did not advise us to do this. But I don't think, I don't recall that we, it was impossible. We could not do it, but we were not advised. And lastly, on the vote, when we came out of executive session and we took the votes in public session, I went back to the executive session minutes, the motion right under F. What I have for the motion, if I can find it quickly, it, there were three... I'm sorry, I'm wrong. I see all three, contract employees early, so I'm fine. Those were my corrections.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, what was that?
I have one.
Sure.
This is Susan, I have one.
Go ahead.
So, under Remote Learning Plan A, SH made a motion that the school committee is encouraged by the Remote Learning Plan, doesn't look forward to his application. It's actually SE made the motion.
There we go. And anyone else? Okay, hearing no other discussion, I guess we can move to a vote on the minutes as amended. Secretary Johnson?
Member Karen? Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall? Unanimous.
All right. Thank you all. Let's move into public comment. So, for anyone on the line wishing to make public comment, you will be limited to three minutes. We'll ask you to state your name and address for the record. And Secretary Johnson, would you be so kind as to take the, to time us?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone, anyone for public comment? Don't all step up at once.
Are there other people on the line, do we know?
Yeah, there's at least, besides us, there's at least about 14 people.
Really?
Yep. Okay, hearing no public comment, we're going to move right into our committee reports. As chairperson, do I have a report? Well, the only thing I would like to report is that I am thrilled to be moving forward with the Remote Learning Plan. And I wanted to acknowledge Superintendent Harper and Member Johnson and Member Ekstrom, who worked very hard with the union to put in place the items that go into the memorandum of agreement and go into the expectations for our unit members. And it sounds like that process, although long, was very fruitful, and I appreciate their efforts. And that is my report. Superintendent Harper, do you have a report for us?
I think I'll follow suit with your style of report. I like this style of report very much. It's shortened, to the point. So, good evening to the committee and members of the public, and there's a number of the admin team on the line as well. And mostly, I am really pleased to report that we are in the first week of the launch of the Remote Learning Plan. We did have some technical issues with an email to families that went out last week announcing that plan. So, we resent that to all families and staff today. The committee, of course, received it last week, and it has been publicly available since last week. I'm really pleased to report that all of our teachers have been working on classroom websites and Google Classroom sites and have actively been engaging students in our Remote Learning Plan in a really thoughtful way. And it's been quite a pleasure to see individually the teacher sites that are coming online and the types of creative and informative assignments that they're coming up with that meet the guidelines of our Remote Learning Plan and offer flexibility for the families' different situations while really providing enriching and engaging learning opportunities for students. So, I just want to commend our teachers and our administrators and, of course, our committee members who worked hard to bring this all together. And to thank the parents and community members and CPAC folks that provided extensive input. It's really been a community effort. We thank everyone for their patience. And again, I really am very proud of the work that's happened to this point. But of course, it's very exciting to be fully into the launch. So, I really want to thank everyone for their collaborative efforts. And the other comments, I will reserve for our agenda items. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions at this point for the superintendent? Okay, so we'll move into subcommittee?
Wait, 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 sorry. I had it on mute. It took me some time.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm curious, Jordana, is there a plan? Or have you thought about, in a couple of weeks, returning to it and talking with various people and saying, how's it going? What's going on? What needs to be changed? Anything like that? I assume there is, but I'd like to hear it out loud.
In regards to the Remote Learning Plan, Member Ekstrom?
Yes.
Yes. So, you know, we've essentially asked people to launch this and implement it and then provide feedback. So, we are aware of some questions, for example, from the public, and we may be getting ahead. But there's been questions, you know, that have to do with decisions that have not yet been made from the state. So, those are items that are sort of in queue as we receive additional guidance about the date of return to schools, for example. And so, things like that could be incorporated into this plan as advice and guidance is emerging. But also, we expect that this may evolve over time as we get feedback on how it's working and if there is, you know, changing guidelines or any need to revisit it in the future. It's going to continue to be a work in progress, but we feel that we've put a really solid foundation and the initial results have been very positive. So, yes, essentially, we're launching implementation teams at the schools where they're continuing to work on how to streamline it and make sure that it's working well for all families and staff.
Great. That's exactly what I was thinking would happen, and I'm thrilled to hear it.
Excellent. Let the record note that I missed 90% of that because I was chasing the dog who was barking at a neighbor.
Her response was, yes, we're totally doing that.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, so, subcommittee reports. Anyone, any committee have a report, maybe budget?
We do not have a report.
No?
Can I just finish quick? Let me just finish quick, and then I'll... Budget does not have a report, but I do think it's time that we all got together and looked at everything based on what the mayor has given to the city. I hear there's a PDF of the book out there somewhere. Of course, we'll get a copy of that. And then, look at not only cuts that may need to be made, but also thinking about what the state has, has had to say or will have to say about the 21 budget in relation to schools. So, I would like for the school committee to allow us to do that, but of course, that's a decision that has to be made by the group as a whole.
Sounds good. Okay. Someone else had a comment?
Yes, this is Sue Hollins.
Sure, go ahead.
I think it's really important that the budget subcommittee meet and, and maybe that we can, other members interested can meet. I can't speak for anyone else, but I feel like I have very little information about this year's budget. And particularly in these very unusual times, I don't understand what our new costs are, for example, with Chromebooks, or if we excuse tuition fees, what's that going to cost? Or what's happening with this whole van lease purchase? Or, there's just so many things that I feel we aren't talking about in addition to not being clear about the details of the budget we proposed. And I do want to compliment the mayor. I went online and looked up the budget book, and it, there's so much information that's thought-provoking, like, what are we going to do about tax revenue not coming in and being near the threshold? And, I mean, it's, I really think we need to have a very active budget discussions as a committee or as a subcommittee. And that's what I wanted to say, that I feel like I'm not on top of any of it as a member. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. Perhaps, so, Member Ekstrom, you're, you're thinking you want to schedule... I'm sorry?
Chair, could I just make a comment?
Please, absolutely.
I think there were three items noted, and two of them are on the agenda for discussion tonight, specifically to bring them to the committee for public discussion and financial impact.
Yes, you're talking about the Chromebook purchase and...
And the AUL tuition.
Yep. Okay.
If I may, there are others. I just thought of those, like food services, usually, there's just a lot of detail about revenue and expenditure. And I, just expressing, I like understanding what we're doing with our finances, and I just feel like we need much more information these days.
And the comment is noted and appreciated. I don't think you're alone in that. I think we all need to spend some time on it. The struggle has been, since the shutdown, we have the capacity pretty much only to deal with emergency situations, which is, you know, what we're, I can't remember, I literally can't remember if this is our third or fourth school committee meeting since the shutdown, but it's, it's easily too, too many. And what I, I do think we need to look at some budget stuff. I definitely know that there are certain things that we don't have enough information on yet to be able to make any determinations. We're hearing from the state today with some initial guidance around fiscal year 21 budgets and adjustments to those. So, things are rolling out in a, in a kind of sporadic way, and certainly, the budget piece related to '21, it sounds like we might have to go entirely back to the drawing board. And we will do that. We certainly, as a, I think, as a, as a school committee, we can talk now about a charge to the budget subcommittee so that they can have a meeting. And as we know, any member who wants to attend is welcome to attend, but we should talk right now about what charge we would give the budget committee at this time.
Just real quick?
Sure.
Susan, this is Susan. I want you to understand all of those, I've been thinking about all of those things a lot, as Jordana and the chair and/or Amy are aware, just so you understand that I haven't let that stuff leave my mind either.
This is Jean, and I don't know if you know the budget, and would love to have a subcommittee meeting so you could fill me in?
Of course.
Could I make a motion then? I'd like to move that the budget subcommittee become active during these unusual times and that a first study be how our current year budget revenues and expenditures are impacted by the coronavirus pandemic.
Susan Farber, did you get that motion?
I'm sorry, there was a little hiccup in the audio, so I have most of it, but not all of it.
Can you read us what you have?
Sure. That the budget subcommittee, and that its first study is how our current year budget revenues and expenditures are impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. But there was something after that the budget subcommittee meet that my audio hiccuped.
I think I meant to, I think I said it's become active.
I think that's what it was, too.
Become active.
I understand there's emergency situations, and you can't be doing everything at once, but I just think we have to start with where are we? That's a good starting point.
And I think if Susan and Amy have been discussing it, and I have not been part of it, the committee's been meeting, but not the whole committee.
No, no, no. We have not...
No, no, no. No, because if Amy and I alone talk about it, we're a quorum. And so, we specifically cannot do that. And so, I have brought up topic to Jordana and Amy, saying specifically, Amy is included on this because she is the chair of the committee, not because she's a member of the budget
Are you saying, are you saying, though, there are communications by a quorum?
No. There's me saying, hey, we need to look at the budget, and I'm thinking about this. And Jordana will respond, Amy does not.
Just so we're clear about process, we were in the middle of getting Member Hollins' motion cleared up. It's going to need a second, and then we can continue into discussion.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, let's move to a vote. Member Johnson?
No, wait, I was speaking. I was on mute. I'd also...
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, please.
I'd like us, I'd like us to talk about, I, the motion is very large, and we can probably put a lot of things underneath it. However, I would like us to specifically talk about the '21 budget and things, the actions that we need to take and what it is, thoughts of how we are going to meet our expenses in the best ways possible.
Am I hearing that you want that, are you saying that you want the, the motion amended? Or are you just adding that as commentary, understanding that can be included under the current motion?
Actually, I'd like to add that to the motion if Susan would be okay with that.
Yes, I would be in favor of that to add, and also, look at the FY '21 budget proposed.
Okay, so that's a further amendment. And, Member Ekstrom, would you like some further discussion around items to charge the budget subcommittee?
I don't think right now. I think that we, that's a, at least one meeting's worth.
That was good. Okay, so let's move to a vote on the motion then. Member Johnson, if you will.
Before we do that, this is Susan Farber again. I want to make sure that amended motion. So, what I have is that the budget subcommittee become active and that its first study be how our current year budget revenues and expenditures are impacted by the coronavirus pandemic, and also, the '21 budget and how we are going to meet expenses in the best way possible.
Does that sound good to everyone?
That one for me.
Okay. Let's move to a vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Member, Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you all. Do we have any further subcommittee reports? Okay, and I don't think we have anything from school committee representatives. Let's move right into new business. The first item, I'm hoping the superintendent can just give us a little overview of how we got here. What we're looking at is, you should have a document on GPA credits, et cetera. It's a one-pager. And Superintendent Harper, if you would, just give us a little intro to what we have
Sure. So, the, moving to the Remote Learning Plan and moving specifically to credit, no credit, as recommended in the commissioner's guidance and adopted in our Remote Learning Plan, poses some specific questions at the secondary level in particular, and we've attempted to address those. And so, you see here the input from the leadership teams at the middle school and high school. So, first, in regards to the most recent terms at the high school, specifically in regard to third quarter, what they're talking about is essentially how to apply these. So, they've made a recommendation where teachers should exempt any assignments that students would have had an opportunity to make up from March 16th to April 10th from their third-quarter grade books. And the remaining grade in power school, anyone failing and anyone passing, they're laying this out, okay? So, specifically addressing equity provisions for how they would enter the third-quarter grades into those courses. The middle school has already completed the second trimester, so this provision is not, there's not a significant need for change. In regards to the fourth quarter, beginning this Monday, fourth quarter assignments at the high school will be given on a credit, no credit basis, as outlined in the Remote Learning Plan, so essentially, moving forward. Teachers will record credit assignments as 100% if they're credit and non-credit assignments as 0%. And this will be revisited, depending on the return date to school, which is currently set by the governor at May 4. The middle school follows something similar in that students are given credit for courses completed. There's not a need for waiting. They were proposing that the report cards feature term one as previously reported, term two, reported under the previous grading system, and then term three, switching to credit or no credit. And the power school codes for that has been imported. And then, the final section is in regards to final exams. And at the high school, there would be no final exams, and there would be a need for re-waiting, which would be determined by the projected return date that the governor had set previously of May 4. And at the middle school, there would be no final exams, but there's not a significant change in practice needed here. So, essentially, these are ways that we're trying to work out the credit details that are especially important for GPA and waiting and answering some of the questions that students and families and teachers have around how this translates and some of the practical questions. I also believe that both Principal Patnod and Principal Dole are on the phone if there are specific questions, but that is the information that we'd like, the support of the committee in adopting this way of moving forward with our new Remote Learning Plan.
Thank you. That's helpful. So, what I would like to do at this point is get a motion. We do have to approve or not approve this as a policy. And I'll get a motion, and then we can have further discussion, especially if there's questions for Principal Dole or Principal Patnod.
Motion to support the policy as put forward by the superintendent.
And a second?
Come on, come on.
Sounded like that was Member Ekstrom.
May I make a clarification?
Please.
This, this would be an implementation, but would not be a policy change itself, so it'd be a procedure that we would implement for just during school closure.
Oh, thank you. That is an important distinction. Thank you. Further discussion or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Go ahead, Member Hollins.
This is Hollins. I mostly, at the high school level, do I understand that, I understand there won't be final exams, so the grades will be given out, and it will be based on whether or not you do, a student does assignments, and if they do, they get a grade, and if they don't, they get a zero. But what I want to say is, what I recollect about high school is it only takes a couple of zeros for a student to, you know, who's already maybe doing C or D-level work to fail. And I'm very interested in how, how we are addressing the disparity of advantage for who has easy access to online, whatever it is, and who doesn't, and how we're looking at the impact of zeros on failures and whether or not people can make this up if they have a hardship. So, I just have some questions about these zeros, particularly what that means. The middle school, middle school, my question would be more around giving out zeros, what the impact is on students who then would fail their grade, and if we're allowing people to make up work in the summer, and again, if people didn't have technology, what are we doing about that? Those are my concerns. So...
So, if I could address those, and I may ask both Principals to weigh in as well, because their teams have spent a lot of time talking about this, and in a meeting with the Principals earlier today, we revisited these same issues for exactly the purpose of asking, is this, can this ensure equity? So I want to back up a little bit and talk about the learning plan just for a moment, and remind people that there are very clear expectations laid out in the Remote Learning Plan that follow the Commissioner's Guidance, that essentially say that the assignment of credit or no credit is, puts, puts a lot of responsibility on both the students to reach out and also the teachers to support and provide support to students and families, and that no credit is not being assigned except when students have the ability to complete the assignment and are essentially choosing not to. And we have had some parents that have essentially said, we're not interested in completing these assignments, although we do have access to technology and internet. And we do need to ask students to engage in their responsibility to complete learning assignments while schools are closed and to connect with their teachers, and this is designed to allow flexibility as opposed to grading, which we felt would be inequitable if a student has a color printer and an internet access and a dedicated laptop at home and is able to do quote unquote "A" work, and another student may not have such technology but is able to participate as best they can, and might result in, you know, typically C or D work, but not based on the student's actual academic ability, that actually creates more inequity. So what we're doing here is simply saying, if a student is engaging to the best of their ability and working with the teacher to address any questions or concerns, the teacher can assign credit for that work completed. If the student is not engaging at all and the teacher has reached out to them, or the administration has reached out to them, or the Guidance Staff has reached out to them, and the student is not completing assignments, but not due to hardship or some other reason, then the school has the ability to assign no credit. And I want to specifically commend the high school for a system that really helps, the staff are actively trying to support students in this. At the district level, we did provide Chromebooks to every student to ensure that they would have access, and we also shared internet information. We know that there are a smaller number of families that still don't have internet access, and we also shared, as a stopgap measure, we shared the wifi information for some of our schools that they could actually access from the parking lot if somebody truly needed internet right away. And we're very pleased that GSET has worked with the schools and the city to roll out some other affordable options to families that might not otherwise right now have internet access. So we've put quite a lot of thought into how to lower the barriers to make sure that all students can engage in learning activities, and with those, those supports in place, we feel that credit and no credit is an important way to help motivate the learning to continue.
May I ask some more questions?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm curious about, because some of this will only work as much as you have teacher buy-in, and my question is prompted, and I'm going to forward an email that I got to the Principal and let her deal with it, because I don't want to, but my question is prompted by one of the teachers sending an email to my daughter that said, if you want to do this, here's this. It's not so much an assignment as, you know, if you're bored, let's roll out, roll around and try this out. So I'm just curious, do you have any sense of sort of teacher buy-ins of what we're trying to do?
I think the question you're asking is a little bit different. So there are some assignments that are sort of additional, they might be enrichment, they might be kind of above and beyond, they might be, you know, without knowing the specifics of what you're looking at, teachers might be posting the required assignments for the week and then offering an extra sort of extension activity. And that, and that would be totally appropriate, so I think there are different ways that we can do this. I was on a call with the Commissioner earlier today, and he said there are lots of ways to skin a cat. I happen to like cats, I don't skin them that often, so I don't, I don't know if I would have chosen that expression, but you get the point.
I mean, okay.
There's lots of ways to do it. And I think we're, we're going to work out any, you know, bumps in the road in the first, you know, week or so here of implementing.
Yeah.
So I encourage people with questions like that to please reach out to the teacher or the principal and just say, if there's a question, if you need clarification. But again, this is more broadly, so if you're completing a learning assignment for that term, you're going to get credit. If you're not completing any learning assignments for that term, and you're not reaching out and saying, hey, I'm having difficulty, it's because I don't have, you know, a Chromebook or internet, and there's just no engagement, then the, the assignment would be no credit.
Follow-up?
Please, Member Hollins.
I have a couple additional questions, but it's not because I think I know the answer, they're just questions. One is, can students request an incomplete and be able to do assignments over the summer if they have some reason for that? That's one question. Another is, I listened in on a national webinar today, what different people are doing. Some schools where students don't have internet access are providing something, the schools buy, I forgot what it's called, a hotspot or something, I remember I got one of these ones myself, that gives you immediate internet access wherever you are. And some schools were letting students do things using their phone, they were giving up on Chromebooks where it was impossible for families to organize that. And there was a lot of discussion, which was also on my mind, I think Chair Poiroti brought this up last time. All of this is fine for students who are intact and motivated, but we have students that are at risk and are unmotivated, and they take a lot of support. Is there some review panel in place, including the school psychologists, to make sure that people are treated uniquely based on whether they're already at-risk students? So those are my questions, I'm worried about all the zeros and having one standard for everybody, no incomplete and no review, and how the impact is on people failing.
I'm not sure who is best to address that.
Jordana, this is Karen Patnood, I don't know if you want me to jump in here. Hi, Susan.
Jordan, his phone cuts out, so if you don't hear her, maybe she's going to...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I was saying, please, go ahead, Principal Patnood, I wonder if Principal Patnood could speak to this, that'd be great, please, go ahead.
With regards to the incompletes and summer assignments, Susan, we've put this at a May 4th deadline under the Governor's date right now, and we will be reviewing if that date gets extended. So that is definitely something that will be in conversations, but nothing that's been decided yet. With regards to a review panel, I think what you're asking is possibly, do we have a system in place where kids won't fall through the cracks because they are doing the work from home? And I have 10 PLT meetings every week, we have a student support team meeting, we have a guidance meeting every week, and we go through our 500 kids, and we have a Excel Google Sheet that is set up so that we can make sure our assistant principals and our guidance counselors are following up and connecting with anyone who may not be engaging. So I think we're, you know, trying to put in good systems to support our already vulnerable students, but also to support all of our students during this crisis, really.
Thank you for doing all that and having that concern for all the students, I feel a lot better knowing that.
Thank you, Principal Patnood. Do we have any further discussion at this time, questions? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to a vote. Member Johnson?
Would you clarify if this is the vote on the proposal for middle, high school? And we didn't talk about elementary yet, correct?
This is the middle school and the high school, that's correct.
Thank you.
This is Susan Harper checking in again. The original motion from Member Johnson is, the motion to support the policy as put forward by the Superintendent. The Superintendent clarified, this isn't a policy, it's a procedure implemented during the school closure. So I'm wondering what the motion should read.
Amendment, my motion to say procedure instead of policy, does that satisfy the concern Superintendent Harper?
Certainly, thank you.
And could you clarify that it's middle and high school, please?
Who are you asking to clarify that?
I'll say...
Member Johnson, the procedure is put...
Friendly amendment, yes. I forget who seconded, maybe Member Ekstrom?
Yes, you're correct.
Wait, what?
We need your sign-on for a friendly amendment, changing it from policy to procedure and including the language that this is about, middle school and high school.
Works for me.
Are we ready to vote?
I believe we're ready to vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you, good discussion on that as well, I appreciate that. Okay. Technology and Chromebook purchase is the next new business item. I want to...
Chair Poiroti?
Please.
I just, Member Hollins asked about elementary, and we provided this information because it's, it's relevant to the discussion. I think the document came a little bit later into the packet, so if people don't feel prepared to comment on it tonight, that's okay, but we are trying to provide clear guidance to educators as they grapple with report cards and implementing this new plan. So in your packet, you have some proposed language that addresses what credit, no credit might look like at the elementary level. And elementary Principals are also with us on the phone, they, they worked on this together and proposed some, some language. And, and the challenge here is that at the elementary level, we use a standards-based report card, it's an entirely different system, and it helps parents understand their child's progress on the learning standards that are expected in, in that, in a particular grade level. Our Remote Learning Plan specifically states that we're not going to be introducing primarily new material, so we may not be progressing through the standards as we would be in the course of a typical school year. And this begs the question, how do you score a child on a report card when the content is not as expected? And then applying the credit, no credit, Principals felt it was more appropriate to send a letter to parents and simply outline that your child has been working towards the learning assignments with the same types of supports that we just talked about. At the elementary level in particular, classroom teachers, working with Title I teachers, English Language teachers, the principal, Guidance Counselors, Special Educators, really work together to try to provide safety nets for children. So they're reaching out, I've seen a number of exchanges already where teachers are trying to make sure that they've had contact with all of their students and supporting them. If despite that, a family does not engage in any learning assignments, then they would not get credit for that term. And likewise, if a child is participating, although that may look different from family to family based on their situation, they would get a letter that states that their child is getting credit for progressing through their, their learning assignments. And so you have a packet that simply states those proposed letters home, which could reflect this change in the Remote Learning Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't see that in my packet, but I probably just missed it somewhere. Does everyone else have that?
It's page 19 of 24 pages in the file that Laurie sent out today.
Thank you. So do, Jordana, are you asking for us to approve the elementary piece as well?
I, I would, I would appreciate if the Committee could engage in some discussion of it. If a vote is possible, it will give teachers direction as they're working on report cards and how to approach this with families.
Sure. I'm sorry for the confusion, everyone. So let's move into the document regarding elementary. And we take a motion and then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion, it may not be the motion you want, but I'll move that we, I'll move that we pick up the discussion of credit, no credit at the elementary level at our next meeting.
Do we have a second? No second?
No second.
Second, I was trying to deal with my mute button, second.
Okay, second from Member Ekstrom. So can we assume if it's silence that you're seconding? No, just joking, that's a joke, that's a joke.
Apparently so.
Okay, so, the motion is to take up discussion of elementary at our next meeting, that was Member Hollins, and seconded by Member Ekstrom, any discussion?
I have a question. Yes, if Susan wants to explain, because I was going to ask why she didn't want to converse base about it tonight.
Well, I have a few questions, but if you look at how its word is, under credit, it's more like a letter instead of a guideline, it says, thank you for participating, and then we appreciate your support all this time, and to me, I think that, but if you look at no credit, it's, it's more based on what the child has done, so that's one reason, I think it needs to be more clearly defined. Also, if, when I envision the elementary report card, it has categories of things, and what I understand, the idea is with elementary is that the parents are sent something to do, I just don't understand it well enough, and we're, we're talking about something really important, which is whether or not, when you say no credit, somebody's going to, could fail for the year, and so I think it really takes a little more thought about, and clarity for me, what we're doing with elementary children, and are, you know, are we saying that you've responded to the instructional request of your teacher? I just don't know, but for me, thank you for participating, it just, it's just not clear enough what we're saying.
So if I, if, if I could just clarify, this is the sort of general outline of a potential letter to parents that would replace the report card. It could be broken down by subject, but it, it replaces a standards base, so you could have a similar type of outline by subject at the elementary level, for example. And the discussion here is related to a marking period, it's not, we're not talking about failing a child for the whole year. So I want to be very clear, and we're not trying to inflate or conflate two issues here, we're not talking about failing a child for the whole year based on their performance during the school closure and participating in the Remote Learning Plan, and I don't want that rumor out there because there is a lot of uncertainty at this time, so I want to give clear information. We're talking about how we would proceed in the new marking period moving forward.
Are you, excuse me, are you saying, I'm not challenging you, but are you saying that for this one marking period, it would sort of be past fail then for elementary? That's, I just don't understand this well enough to vote it tonight.
Sure, it's, it's trying to apply what would credit, no credit, which is what the Remote Learning Plan calls for and the Commissioner's Guidance calls for. learning plan calls for and the commissioner's guidance calls for. And we're looking to translate that in practice, as we did at the middle school and high school level, to how would that be reflected on the elementary report card? Because it is standards-based, how do you give a mark that reflects credit or no credit in each of a number of areas when those standards may not have been taught under the new remote learning plan? One proposal was to give credit and no credit at the elementary level, using a letter format to the parent or guardian. And some of the potential language was suggested here as an idea. Our elementary principals are on the phone, and they helped draft this language. And so if anybody else wants to weigh in or clarify, we would invite that.
Jordana, this is Nancy Putnam, Federal Street Principal. Can I just add some words to this?
Yes, please do, yes, please.
Please.
Susan, I think what needs to be understood, as the elementary principal, no, the elementary students are putting, bleh, I'm sorry, putting out a menu of assignments for the students every Monday. And in that menu, or in that assignment, comes reading, math, science. They also assign the specialist schedule for the day. So if on Monday, a particular class might have phys ed, Angelo Thomas has submitted a link that the kids can go and do that. I think with that said, that our kids are responding to that, we've gotten, it's only been two days, but we do have a lot of people that are actively participating in this, and we're getting a lot of response from it. So I think that's what we're basing it on. And if this continues after May 4th, this is what we're gonna have to use, is what the teachers are putting out there. It covers each one of those groups that I know you are looking at, Susan, when you're talking about that. Does that help at all?
Well, this is Susan, I think what you're talking about sounds great. I don't, I don't think the document we received does justice to what you're saying, so...
Well, I think what she received was a generic letter, or a letter to explain to parents why they may not receive a report card this year, but they may receive a letter that says, "Your child will be credited for all the work that's been done since we had a shutdown on March 13th." And if it continues after May 4th, then that becomes more important for the parents to understand why. We are following everything we can online, our remote planning. And we spent hours getting the Chromebooks out today and last Friday. So I'm hoping that a lot of people have access to all of the assignments and lessons that are being put out there by our teachers.
Chair Poyeti, may I be recognized?
Absolutely, please, Member Johnson.
I guess I'm hearing, I think, I'm not hearing any, I mean, I think we, I'm hearing support for the broad contours of what is happening, but I'm also hearing an interest from committee members to be able to delve into the documents a little more. Is there something that we could give you tonight that would be useful in terms of moving forward, as well as revisiting this at a later date in more detail?
Jordana, that goes to you, I guess. I'm not sure what they're asking for.
So Glenn, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Glenn, are you saying, you're asking the principals if there's something other than approval of this document that might be helpful? Is that, is that the gist?
Yeah, well, I guess I was hoping Superintendent Harper could speak to it, because I think at the beginning she said, she, maybe I misheard, but I thought I heard something like, I understand if people haven't had a chance to review, we may not be able to vote on it tonight. But at the same time, I know this is kind of like building the planes as we fly them, and if there's something that folks need from the school committee in order to proceed with work and keep getting things done until we can meet again, I want to make sure we give you whatever votes you need to do that.
Right, so to that point, I think we would appreciate any vote that indicates that while we continue to develop a proposal, you know, that the remote learning plan guidelines of credit no credit will be applied at the elementary level, and that the committee, you know, will have an opportunity to further review how that might be implemented at an upcoming meeting.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So me always looking down the road and what's gonna happen next. If there are students who have no credit through no lack of effort on the school district's part, then what? Meaning, and this is, again, this is looking in the future, and this isn't, I don't need an answer, but I'm putting this in everyone's head, are we saying that that student doesn't advance? Or are we saying that, yeah, well, next year, we're all gonna have to think about what we, where we start, I guess, when we do in-person teaching based upon when we left off the previous year? And the ramifications of that. I'm just putting all, just adding that for food for thought, I guess.
Could I amend my motion?
Okay, so there is a request from Member Hollins to amend her motion. What would be, can you give us what would be the amendment?
I'd like to add to the motion, or suggest adding, "And appreciate efforts of administrators and teachers to develop clear credit no credit guidelines for elementary students."
But you're still asking for this to be put off for a vote at our next meeting?
Yes.
The person who seconded would need to accept that as a, would the person, I can't remember my Robert's rule, but I think so.
It's me, and I would, and I'd need to accept the amendment. I guess, I'm curious, what more are we gonna talk about? I mean, it'll get fleshed out more. If we're feeling acceptable with what it is now, why not roll now?
I just don't think the way it's worded is at all clear. Thank you, we appreciate your support. I don't think that's a clear guideline on credit no credit way...
Could I just address this? This is not a guideline. So once again, this is proposed language in place of a report card. That is a summative after extensive outreach and guidelines are in place. This is not a guideline. It is literally a potential text of a message home in place of a report card. It is not intended as a guideline.
It's there to give us a picture of what the approach is going to be, and it's not in formalized. The letter.
I can speak if there's time.
Who's that?
That's Katie.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, I'm ready to vote on this. I think this is just an example, this, the way I read it was, it was an example of what I would receive at the end of the semester, as a mother of two elementary school children, trying to accomplish these tasks. I think it gives the teachers and administration, the guidance counselors, the school behaviorists, all enough leeway to reach out to all of the children and be able to give them credit for where they're at. I think that it's pretty clear as a parent, if I read that, I participated, my kid got some credit, I chose not to participate, I didn't get credit. But when I say I chose, the whole theory of this whole thing is that you were given the opportunity to participate at whatever level you could, whatever that means for your family, what you're capable of doing. It's, and if you chose not to because you didn't want to, that's someone's choice, and that's what it's telling them. You chose not to, so we have to give you no credit for this semester. But it's an elementary student, it's not that, it's not like the high school, it's not this rocket science that we have to keep going around and around about.
Thank you, Member Karen. So we have a motion on the table to push this decision on this to our next meeting, and it was amended in some way that I'm forgetting. Sorry.
To add an appreciation, an expression of appreciation, I think.
Oh, thank you. So I, let's see, are we ready to vote on this motion, or is there further discussion at this time?
I'll just add that I'm gonna vote no on this, and I look forward to motions similar to what Member Karen discussed.
Thank you. Why don't we take a roll call vote? Member Johnson, please.
Member Karen?
No.
Vice Chair Extrem?
No.
Member Hollins?
Yes, this is, this is just moving it to another meeting, yes.
Secretary Johnson, no. Chair Poyeti?
No.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Yes, all right. The motion fails four to two.
So at this point, that motion has not passed, I would entertain another motion.
I'll give it a go. I move that we accept the proposed concept of credit no credit as the way of grading the elementary school, with the understanding that the language given to the families will possibly change, but the understanding of how it will be graded with this credit no credit system is the same. Which was a terribly wordy motion, sorry about that.
And is there a second?
No second.
Second from Member Johnson. And Susan Farber, do you have what you need?
I can read it back to make sure that Member Karen has, that she and I agree on what I've gotten down.
Please.
The motion as I have it is that we accept the proposed concept of credit no credit as a way of grading elementary school students, with the understanding that the language given to families will possibly change, but understanding that credit no credit is the same.
All right. That the language, let's see, I just wanna, it's not that the language given, that the language we see tonight may not be the exact language given to families, that's what I'm trying to say.
But the concept will remain the same?
Yes, but the concept will remain the same.
Member Johnson, are you okay with that?
Member Karen, would you accept a friendly amendment to change from grade to evaluate?
Yes.
I thought it was just a report card we're talking about, how you're going to report, and that's how you're going to evaluate children? I'm more confused.
I was trying to get away from grading, since it's credit no credit, but yeah, maybe, I don't know what the correct terminology is.
I don't either, but I think we were just talking about a new way to report on a report, replace a report card.
Yeah, so maybe the amendment is, maybe, I can't remember what the original motion was, so it's hard to get the language right.
Yeah, if you could read it back, Susan Farber, when you get a second?
Yes. Sorry, I was thinking if it was possible for me to paste it into the chat room, but I'm not.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So here it is. That we accept the proposed concept of credit no credit as a way of something, elementary school students, with the understanding that the language we see tonight may change, but the concept will remain the same. So as a way of...
Reporting to parents of elementary school students.
Can you say that again, please, sorry?
Reporting to parents of elementary school students.
Could we end the motion right there? Just approving the concept?
Member Karen, do you accept that as an amendment?
I'd like to know from the principals or the superintendent if that's enough information for them to move forward with. I don't want them to have to come with us, again, with language, like repeatedly, I don't want to have to waste their time. Why am I hearing myself?
We can all hear you twice. Susan, do you want to read us what it is as it is now?
Yes. That we accept the proposed concept of credit no credit as a way of reporting to parents of elementary school students, with the understanding that the language we see tonight may change, but the concept will remain the same.
Do any elementary principals on the line want to weigh in?
Did everyone find their mute button, to add something?
Comment?
Uh, this is... Go ahead.
No.
This is Nancy, I would just say that that's fine at this point. We have no idea what the extension might happen, and it may change. But at this point, May 4th is the deadline that the governor has put out, and we'll work towards that until May 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Uh, one more comment. Sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm comfortable with the motion and approving the concept. I think we can do a better job with what we actually write out for parents, that's clearer, that's all.
When you say "we," you mean, can you clarify? I just want to say, guys, we're in a pandemic, and we're coming up with 50-page learning plans, and this came late to the committee, and we, as we said at the beginning, I would appreciate not having public criticism of our school administrators, we've already tabled, you know, for further, the details. Could we all just be mindful of the constraints we're working under, and our employees are at halftime when we're having public criticism of folks that are working around the clock? Thank you.
I'm sorry, that wasn't a public criticism.
It absolutely was.
Let's move to a vote. I think we've all, I think we've all heard enough on this issue, I'd like to move to a vote. Member Johnson?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Joint Chair Poyeti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Wonderful, let's move on. We're talking next about the technology and Chromebook purchase. I want to make sure, I am feared...
I just, I mentioned I can only be on until 7:15 today.
Yes. So when you have to go...
Yeah, I do have to go.
Yep, and so, Member Extrem, would you take over the roll call voting, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Member Johnson, appreciate you being with us.
Sure, bye, good luck.
Bye-bye. Okay, so technology and Chromebook purchase. Someone else want to speak, was someone interrupting? Okay. I want to be very clear on this. There's been some confusion over what is happening with Chromebooks, and I want, and I want the superintendent to interrupt me if I misspeak. But in the case of our Chromebook situation in the schools, we have gone through a massive undertaking of cleaning them all up, the ones that already belong to the district, and giving those out to students in a orderly and socially distance-appropriate manner over, I think, three days. I saw as a parent some amazing outreach in order to determine if our family needed any technology from the schools, and I can only imagine what it took, the effort that it took from everyone involved to make this happen. I don't have the exact number, is it around 300 Chromebooks that we gave out? Superintendent Harper?
485.
Thank you, 485. And what we are doing tonight is actually, now that I, now that I'm saying this, did we get the proposal in the materials tonight? Does any, did anyone see the Chromebook proposal?
There's an executive summary in your packet, is that what you're looking for, Chair?
Yes. What page is it on? Anyone know?
22, sorry, 21, it starts on 21.
There it is. Okay, thank you. Yes, page 21 of the packet. So what we are looking, and this gives you the numbers, and I'm just looking through it quickly, make sure I'm not missing anything. We are interested in doing a replacement or a purchase for anticipating we will need to replace some of the Chromebooks, and some quotes have been put together. I don't see any information about the purchase in here, though.
I was unable to find it either. It sort of stops with the, like, it seems like the sentence was supposed to continue, but it stops.
Thank you.
If the information did not reach the committee, I would not ask you to take a vote on it tonight. There was a quote that was requested by our Director of Technology and through our business manager and the city's procurement officer. There was a quote put together to, based on the lending of these Chromebooks for home use and the anticipated wear and tear and the need for some additional cases. There was a quote put together for 500 Chromebooks that essentially means that we can continue to cycle these Chromebooks back into the school building. The Chromebooks that are out now are on loan. We do need them back. We rely on them for state testing and our instructional program when we resume school, and we know that because they're having extensive use now in addition to what they would have gotten in classroom use, that we'll be replacing them sooner than later based on this distribution program. We feel it was really important to get Chromebooks out and we know that our participation in remote learning activities skyrocketed as soon as Chromebook access was, was possible for many students. So this simply was a game changer. Without it, students would not have been able to participate, and that was a real important consideration and one of the reasons we did not launch the Remote Learning Plan before, earlier in the year before we could get this program together. Having said that, I think it will be important to plan ahead now to ensure we have adequate Chromebooks to continue our state testing and our instructional use in the classroom. So if you don't have the quote in your packet, then I would say, although the numbers may change slightly, that we should bring this back to you and we would be looking for the committee's support to purchase additional Chromebooks in the manner that we've described and as laid out here to support our school district use, and that those are not, it's not holding anything up in the Remote Learning Plan, but there is a national backorder, as you can imagine, and so we wanna get that process rolling. And the purchase amount is in the ballpark of $141,000 for those Chromebooks, based on the quotes that we have received, working through the procurement process so far. And if Steve's member co or business manager's on the line, if you wanna add anything else, you're welcome to.
Steve, are you on the line?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Hello.
Hi, how are you guys? Yeah, basically, Carol got a quote from Trinity III for 141,000, their 500 Chromebooks with a five-year warranty. Trinity III is the only one that offers a five-year warranty. Most only offer two or three-year warranties, and we did work with Phil and we are able to procure these under the emergency procurement, given the need and, and everything else for that. So we are set to go when you guys are ready to go, and that'll be a nice, and we could possibly shoehorn this into any type of reimbursement through, through the COVID reimbursement in the state aid program.
Through the CARES Act?
I'm sorry, what's up?
Through the CARES Act?
CARES Act, yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Through the CARES Act?
Yes, yeah, it would be through the, the money coming to the state through, through the CARES Act.
And Steve, are you certain of the amount of the quote?
Yeah, yeah, I have it right in front of me. It is $141,000 even.
Okay, and anyone else on school committee, am I correct? I do not see this quote in the packet. Is that correct?
I don't see it either.
I don't either.
It, it, there was, there was more to be put in. I think it just didn't get added.
Yep. So, how would we like to proceed? I would entertain a motion of any sort. I would entertain a motion to send it to the Budget Subcommittee Meeting, Subcommittee. I would also entertain a motion to approve the amount now without seeing the quote. Motion to table, however you guys wanna approach it.
Well, I have a question, if I may. Do we need a motion before I can ask a question?
Um, go ahead and ask your question.
Alright.
Len's not here anymore, so you can ask your question.
Sweet. So, we had talked about in the early stages of the budget, Carol had come to our Budget Subcommittee Meeting and said we need 500 Chromebooks, essentially. We've loaned out Chromebooks to everyone. Of course, we're gonna have more wear and tear because they're in everyone's house and people are using them. Is this number somehow related to the ones that we were expecting to have or expecting to need, or is this solely because of the coronavirus?
So I would say this is the, the bare minimum in terms of replacement of what we expect to see based on keys that need replacement, machines that need servicing, based on the, you know, roughly 480, 85 that went, went out as of today. We know that that number is higher. If we could do 1,000 Chromebooks, we, that would be beneficial to us, but again, this is strictly for the replacement amount that we think is related to the COVID response, and that's for tracking purposes also. So this is related to the Chromebooks that went out and any more devices that need to be repaired over the course of the time.
Thank you. How about a motion? I believe the mayor has just joined us. Roxanne, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Mayor.
Alright, I like, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion.
Please.
Motion to have the Budget Committee further review the cost of additional Chromebook purchases at their next Budget Subcommittee Meeting.
Second. Any, so we have a motion from Member Ekstrom and a second from Member Wall. Any further discussion or questions?
I'd like, so, I'm a little nervous about just saying, sure, let's do that. I'm not actually seeing a number.
What do you mean, not actually seeing a number?
Not having a number in my packet in front of me that says, X Chromebooks are going to pass the, here's the agreement for the proposal from wherever.
No, agreed. I think, I do think we should, to be responsible, especially knowing what's happening with our finances in the district, our finances at the city level, we need to be able to see it, for sure. So we move to a vote? Everyone okay with that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
That's me. Okay.
Member Ekstrom, will you take a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, yes. We are unanimous. That is going to be reviewed by the Budget Committee Subcommittee, sorry.
Awesome. Oh, and Member Weetigartner is on the line, but I don't think she heard the whole discussion on that one, which we should include her from here on out.
I did not, but I would agree with Susan that if you don't have a number in front of you, you probably shouldn't vote on it, but that's my only comment. I will abstain.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the committee, that, that there is a number, there is a quote, it has gone through procurement. I just sent it out to the full committee. It was simply an oversight in your packet, so it wasn't intended to be with your packet, but I appreciate the review at the Budget Subcommittee level. So it's, it's now in everyone's hands.
Thank you.
My goal is that we have a budget meeting next week, so...
Or sooner.
Okay.
How's tomorrow?
We can't, because we have to post it, kid. Otherwise, I'd say, fine.
Great. How's Friday?
Still too soon, you know that.
Alright, let's move forward with the agenda. Everyone, let's stay focused. Let's move forward with our agenda. We're on AEL tuition, and there is information in the packet. There is a letter from Tom King, the principal of AEL, and, so what do I wanna say? AEL tuition. This is a process that is a little bit more involved than I think people probably realized before the shutdown, and there is now this proposal that hopefully everyone has had a, a chance to see. The recommendation from Principal King is to waive tuition at the preschool for the reasons that are noted in his, in his memo to us. My understanding is that also that tuition is not currently being collected since the shutdown, but what I would also like to remind the committee of is that the preschool teachers are being paid and are working, and the preschool students are a part of the Remote Learning Plan. So I would like to address this in its totality and not just based on the proposal. I think we need to look at it bigger picture. Superintendent Harper, I don't know if you wanna say anything further?
Sure, I would. I, I think that, I'm really glad this is before the committee. I think that because it is primarily a financial matter, I, I think it may be appropriate to go before the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, given that there is a meeting coming up quickly, to, to discuss some of the details of this, so the Budget and Finance Committee has a clear understanding of the, oh, the background is terrible. If there's anybody that can mute their phone and isn't, that would be very helpful. I, I wanted to just note that we have a number of families who have changed their financial position during the, the time of the school closure and related to employment status, and so that's factored into Principal King's notice to the committee, and then also the change in the times of the length of the day are primarily how tuition rates are set. So those are sort of particular details that need to be addressed in this vote, and I think a Budget and Finance Committee meeting would allow some time to fully address those details, and, and that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Harper. Based on that, I would entertain a motion. Like a simple one, a motion to move the AEL tuition discussion to the Budget Subcommittee?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I got a motion from Member Wall and a second, I think that was Member Ekstrom?
Yeah.
Any...
We're gonna need more than one meeting, I'm just saying.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I make a comment.
Please.
I think we, I think we should not only understand the cost implication, clearly we're not gonna, but also we need to understand what amount of money we're going to add to our budget this year and how we will address that.
Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, may I make a comment? I do wanna mention that we have special education students who attend AEL, and as they are students regardless of what we do about tuition, and they, those students are not paying for any tuition, their services will likely still need to be provided regardless of whether we are charging for tuition or if the teachers are actually teaching. Karen?
Correct.
That's a thought.
Right.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, let's move to a vote. Member Ekstrom, roll call vote, please.
Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Mayor Weetigartner, sorry. Mayor Weetigartner?
She's probably muted.
Abstain. Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Thank you.
Member Ekstrom says yes. So, we are moving the AEL tuition discussion to the Budget Committee.
Okay. Remote Learning Plan. Let's move on to the Remote Learning Plan. Superintendent Harper, since it's been a full, almost 48 hours since we started using the Remote Learning Plan, do you have a detailed report for us of how it's going?
Well, I can tell you that I get about 1,500 emails a day from Google Classroom sites in those two days. So in all seriousness, I really just, I wanna take a step back and say, the Remote Learning Plan is really a tremendous collaborative effort. I think you folks have been involved in it throughout. I really wanna thank the teachers for their flexibility and jumping into something that hasn't existed in the past. For almost all teachers, this represented a totally different way of having a classroom and trying to reach their students, and if you have ever been a teacher or have known a teacher or have spent time in a classroom, you know that teachers make their classrooms places that are inviting and welcoming and safe and creative and wonderful places to learn. And teachers have a challenge of, how do you create that online? One way we did that was through our YouTube channel. We have over 4,000 views and over 150 subscribers, but the best way that that's happening is through the individual contact that teachers and students are having, through guidance counselors reaching out, through special educators providing services, through PT, OT, speech services. I, I really, I wanna thank our special educators who are doing all of these things and also working with families to develop special education student remote learning plans. And, you know, to all the parents, this is a tremendous shift, and I really wanna thank the parents who have been patient while the district has grappled with this and who are helping their own students at home. You need to understand that we're not asking you to be the teacher. We're not asking you to suddenly know all the Common Core math standards. We are doing our best to meet you.
It's been pretty amazing to see the...
Hello?
Jordana, I don't know if you can tell, but you're really cutting out quite a bit.
Okay.
Not sure what's happening there. Your, your, your phone is cutting in and out.
Alright, I'll, I'll put it on hold. You all can talk about the learning plan. We'll listen to Selma.
Okay, so, the Remote Learning Plan is in operation. Last week, our motion was that we were encouraged by the Remote Learning Plan as presented, and we look forward to its application. The, the plan is now implemented. Do we want to entertain another or different motion related to the Remote Learning Plan? Anyone?
I don't know that we need to. I mean, it's implemented, it's doing its thing. We've already heard that it is a work in progress. Let's see how it goes, and yay, we are still encouraged.
Okay.
Is there some reason why we would? Is there some reason why we would?
Well, the only, the only thing that I've, I've kind of thought about is, what we don't want is for this whole remote learning... what we don't want is for this uh whole remote learning um implementation to move forward and then anyone to question whether or not the School Committee was behind it. Um, and I I'm not crazy. I don't really want, as I expressed last week at our meeting, I'm not really interested in voting to approve. Um, but I think we want to say that we support the implementation or something along those lines so that um there is full support at all levels for working with this very innovative and unexpected unprecedented plan.
Comment?
Sure, go ahead, Member Holland.
I completely agree with you. My my um that we should express our support for uh what the schools are doing. My comment, which isn't a criticism, is to say that.
Can anyone hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, what I want to say is that all over the country, people are figuring this out and are are getting ideas from each other on how to still set goals and how to still evaluate student performance. And my only objection to voting a uh final plan is that I think we're in a an interspace with a date that may continue through the rest of the year and I think it's evolving. And there may be some great ideas that we can add to our already good ideas. That's my thought.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, so do we want to move forward and perhaps revisit this item at our next meeting? Just as a check-in, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And not at the next budget meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with that. So the School Committee on the Remote Learning Plan at this point, um, we know that it is a work in progress and we're encouraged by it and um we're still looking forward to the application. Sounds like it's too early for us to vote on it. Um, and I will move it to our next meeting. And with that, we have finished our new business items. Um, the the uh plan is that we are now going to go into executive session. We will come back after executive session only to close the public portion of the meeting. We will not be having further business, but folks are welcome to stay on if they so choose to wait for us to come back. The executive session is on a separate line. And the reason for the executive sessions tonight is um uh Massachusetts General Law, Section 30A, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Reason three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And then finally, number 10, to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided in the course of activities conducted by a government body as an energy supplier. Okay, not an energy supplier, but it is related to, good lord, that's long. It is related to transportation and we'll leave it at that. I don't see that listed in here, but that was the one I was told to use. So we are moving into executive session with a vote, correct? We need a vote? Member Ekstrom, would you be seconding? Oh, someone made a motion. Very good. Yes.
Member Wall?
I'm sorry, who made the motion to go to executive session? Who seconded it?
Uh, I think. Member Ekstrom?
Sure.
I'll second. This is Holland.
Susan Farber, we good?
We're good, thank you.
All right, so let's do this again. Sheriff Poyetty?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Mayor Weedy Gardner?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ekstrom, we are unanimous and can go to into executive session.
Adjourn the Special School Committee meeting for Tuesday, April 14th.
No, we won't.
No?
Nope, we got a vote in public.
Oh, good god. Yes, we do. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. How many people are on the line to hear that? A few. Okay. Okay, so let's take our votes.
All right, so.
Um, let's see, a motion for the approval of the Memorandum of Agreement with the GEA.
Second.
No, I don't think I can make the motion. Someone else has.
Okay, I'll I'll make the motion.
Jean made the motion. Susan Ekstrom with the second.
Any discussion?
No, we're not discussing.
Excellent. Let me do a roll call. Member Poyetty, Sheriff Poyetty?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Ekstrom, we are unanimous.
Okay, and the mayor's um out of battery on her phone and cannot rejoin us. Okay, so now we're moving on to Appendix A. That is the uh Unit A Expectations in the Remote Learning Plan. I would like a motion to approve Appendix A.
I have a question.
No, we can have the motion first. We can have the motion first and then you can ask a question. Motion to approve Appendix A, please.
Selmo.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, what's the discussion, Member Holland?
Can we just affirm the motion made in non-public session so it's not misstated? That's the question.
We're just doing motions to approve. That's good enough for me.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to a vote, please. This is Appendix A.
Member Poyetty, or Sheriff Poyetty?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Appendix C. That is the Remote Learning Plan, Unit C Expectations. Motion to approve, please.
Selmo.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, and a vote, please.
Sheriff Poyetty?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and the final one for transportation and out-of-district costs. Uh, a motion to move that to the Budget Subcommittee for further discussion and review.
Selmo.
And a second.
Seconded.
And a roll call vote, please. Member Ekstrom.
Sheriff Poyetty?
Who made that motion, please?
Oh, that was Member Holland's. I vote yes.
I vote yes. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
All right.
Chair Ak Vice Chair Ekstrom says, yeah, fine. We are unanimous and motion carries.
So now now do we need a motion to adjourn? Correct. Jean, you ready? Do it.
I do it.
In a second.
Second. Holland.
Okay, and a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom says yes.
Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:31 PM. Thank you all.